I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Matthew is going to lead us in the flag salute. Please rise, please.
Please remove your hats and place your right hand in your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Councilmember Allman?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Present.
Alany?
Here.
Mayor Stransky?
Yes.
Public Communications, the City Council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you're interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. While the City Council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impites, or renders feasible -- imfeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that includes but is not limited to use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct, or physical or verbal displays of disrespect, we will not be tolerated and the individual will be removed immediately. Public Matters, first item is Little Lake Fire District Monthly Update.
Oh.
Oh, Public Communications, sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Is this the microphone to make a comment up here?
Yes.
Denise, how are people doing?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Denise Jessie, and I am the Branch Manager for the Willets Branch Library. I want to thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk to you. My purpose for being here today is to say thank you for the donation you gave the library, but I want to give you kind of an explanation why this thank you was late. When we got your generous donation last year, I wanted to be able to tell you what I was doing with your funds. And by the time I got the funds and the purchase approved by the county, and then it was built for us, and then it was shipped from across the country and finally arrived, well now I have the ability to tell you thank you and tell you exactly what I used those funds for. We purchased a Biblio Bike with the funds that you donated to the library. The Biblio Bike is a, it's really a trike, with two wheels on the front with a giant trunk in the front, and when you get to wherever you go in, that trunk opens up magically and becomes shelves where we can display books, and we can take our mobile circulation device, and we can check out books wherever we can pedal. And we're a flat community, so we can pedal anywhere we're willing to. And so, we think with this bike, we can go to the parks while children are playing, we can go to schools, maybe even back to school night, we can pedal wherever people are, ride it downtown and say hello to people, and bring the resources out into the community. It's one of our goals, to not wait for people to come to us, but we should go out to them. And so, with your generous gift, you enabled us to purchase this device that we can go out and be a part of the community and get to know people. And so again, I want to thank you for your generous donation and for your support to the library. I also have a letter that I want to present to you, a written letter of thank you, and I included in it a picture of the Biblio Bike, and so I would like to give that to you now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Hi. Hi. My name's Olga O'Neil, some of you know, and I am the Library Advisory Board Representative for Willets. And I had told Suprema Hall, "Come in and give a report," and I really thought, "I get to come in, give a report, the roof is on its way." Well, there's been a little delay. However, I will say that our new roof has, the metal roof has been approved, which we're very happy about. The board decided they wanted to go back to look at more information about the battery system, because we are going to have solar panels on that, and that will be heard in March. And so, I'm very confident, right, that we will by that time finish the contract with them. And I just also wanted to say, I've been very happy to represent Willets on that board, and I have a great, great respect and affection for libraries, and I feel like it's an underused service that we just want to keep encouraging everyone to use, because it's for everybody, you know, everybody in our community, and Denise and her staff are doing an amazing job, so, thank you. And thank you. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Bears first.
Yeah, Bear Camerof, and I would like to let you know that the Willets Weekly will be back in print edition, probably not for another month, while people heal up, but we are definitely switching over to Facebook as best we can, so a lot of the Willets Weekly and the City Council reports will be on the Facebook page anyway, and so we're still hanging there.
Thank you, Bear.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Caldwell. You think at some point this is getting easier, but it's not. No, it's still racing. I thought about speaking up or not since yesterday's meeting, but I decided to speak out. Up is more important than the backlash I will receive on social media from Ms. Rodriguez, her family members, and her followers. I would like the council to consider to disregard the statement she made yesterday, and rather than squashing any rumors, like city employees are being treated, being mistreated, et cetera, I would like the council to consider to investigate the rumors first, and if found that they are truly just rumors, please then squash them, not prior into looking further into it. I and others who were present yesterday are shocked to hear the statement done by our ex-mayor, but this clearly explains some of the past practices. But I also decided not to piggyback on the statement posted by Ms. Rodriguez on her community leader board yesterday, that included a lot of false information. She tried to correct it some of it, I just wanted to remind her on the statement she wrote me after the Officer Waldstrom debacle, where she said, quote, "It is important to post factual information, or you lose credibility with those who take time to listen to you." I would further like to give a huge thank you to you, Dolores, you for taking on the reading of the agenda items and helping her and our council members out. Thank you, Dolores, you're doing an amazing job. And then I wanted to thank you all, councilmembers. In the short amount you have been seated up there, it has been a pleasure to attend to meetings, interact with each one of you, and see the positive changes that are already happening. The research on unclear items agendas, the double asking of question to make sure it's understood right, and so on, thank you. Our city as a whole is what should be important and not what will benefit some individuals. We all should try to support our council and leave the toxicity at the door. And I would also point out that I disagree with the statement made that Mayor Stransky should lead the meeting more. You're doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deanne. I'm here because I have realized how important the city level of government is in regards to environmental protection. I came from a city council meeting in Pleasanton and was actually just really shocked at how they're basically selling off the heritage trees, and I really am concerned about the well-being of our heritage trees in California with the droughts that are happening right now, so I just came up to say that I'm going to increase my civic participation, and just wanting to thank you all for any decisions you have made in the past regarding tree preservation in Willets, and how much that means to me, and I hope you continue to advocate for our heritage trees and our natural resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello.
I'm sorry. I'll get you next, thank you.
Good evening, Badgus Akaria. I just want to piggyback on what she said about the rumors. I think the community as a whole, we need to put our 100% support to the new city council, and we just need to support what you do, what your plans are, and we need to stop the negative remarks that's been rolling in this town. It's not good to come and criticize what you're doing, and I think we need to sit in the back and watch the good things and what your thoughts are. So I encourage the community to stop the attacks on the new city council meeting, but it's a freedom of speech. You can speak, but you need to sit here, not outside in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. You're on.
All right. I did some research since last night about those trains. I guess the city bought them for a dollar apiece, and they hired a scrapper to scrap it, and then something happened with that, so I was just seeing what the follow-up is with that. So if I leave my information, if somebody could get back to me, that would be great.
Yes.
I was just about to say that please leave your contact information, and we can schedule a meeting and talk about it. Phil Davison is in the audience as well, he's been overseeing that effort. We've been more than willing to explain our strategy and what we're doing, and the twists and turns of trying to get those things removed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for asking.
My name is Will West. My number is 707-272-8212. Thank you very much. Yesterday, it's East Valley Hospital for the Willets Tracks.
Anybody else?
That I was talking about.
Anybody else want to speak at Public Communications? Thank you. Okay, Public Matters, Little Lake Fire Department.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I was thinking about trading in the fire engines for the Biblio Bike.
He has one engine.
Just one engine. For the Little Lake Fire Protection District, we are continuing our state mandated inspections for the schools, hotels, and motels. These inspections not only make sure that our citizens are safe, but they also allow us for an opportunity to do our pre-planning. We have software that we utilize. And kind of a quick update on a pre-plan, it's just when we respond to an emergency, we identify the gas shut-offs, electrical hazards, and any other hazards on the property. So if we do get a call, we'll respond, pull it up on our tablet, and we're able to identify those to keep our guys safe as well. For training, the month of January, we are completing our CPR and First Aid, which consists of the bleeding control, splinting, backboard, child choking, all that good stuff, and PD also comes to our first aid, and I appreciate that, and the working relationship right now, I enjoy that, and the guys are really good. So they'll come and help us out with that. We also do our EMT refreshers, which in this case consisted of the environmental emergencies, that's the hypothermia, hyperthermia, these things and all that good stuff. Current training hours is 190 for the volunteers, and we're currently sitting at 31 calls for service. Quick informational, I'd just like to reiterate the importance of the addresses. If it's a fire, again, we can see it, police or medical responding makes it difficult if the address isn't posted or visible. They do make, I think, Firewise Safe Council makes the green reflective addresses, we can see them at night, as long as they're of good contrasting. But we do have issues responding to calls and not being able to identify addresses, and again, it's okay in a fire, but a medical or CPR, something like that, it makes it difficult, not only for us, again, law enforcement and the ambulance. Real quick, just a quick reminder to check your CO and smoke alarms. With the colder weather, we have had some calls for service regarding CO, there are CO alarms going off, and with our CGI, the combustible gas indicator, we did find a broken heater is what it usually is, but they weren't false, so, and then again, we did respond to some calls where their monitor is at its end of its life. So either replace the battery, they do make the 10-year ones that you can install now, so, just a reminder on that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment? For the chief?
Can you get those bikes?
Okay, an update from John Hascheck, supervisor.
Good evening, council. Mayor Stransky?
Thank you.
It was nice to get together with Mayor Stransky and the city manager last week, and talk about the issues that we, you know, the city has, and the county has, and how we work together, so that's nice to get that going. The caravan was here like last week, and hopefully, you know, that's the start of this new caravan that we have at the county, and so it's nice to get that going. You know, the old one was built in like 1990, and so it had kind of had a good life. And so this new one is newly built and state-of-the-art. So, we talked last time about the workshop that the board was going to have, we had it last week, two days, and we talked about what the general issues were in each of the districts, the state of each district, and then how those kind of blended together, and what the common themes were. And for me, the common themes were public safety, which was certainly law enforcement, but also fire safety and water security, economic development, and then effective government, which means for me, budget stability and sustainability, you know, so making sure that our budget is right. A couple, well, another issue that I wanted to bring to your awareness is that the Social Services just sent out a letter today saying that they were going to have to cut $34,000 from the Willet Senior Center, you know, one of the contracts, and so that, you know, I heard from Richard Baker, and he said that that means that they would have to cut out their outreach program. So when the budget starts, you know, we start having our budget workshops, if people are concerned about that, very important to let the board know that that money would have to come from the general fund, and that's what people, if that's what people want, then we need to have our voices heard. And then also at the workshop, there was a lot of talk about the homelessness issues throughout the county, and what the county's trying to do now is this core program, which means community outreach, response, and engagement. So it's law enforcement along with the social workers and people working with homeless, and trying to make sure that there's collaboration, and people getting the services before they become real crime issues or whatever it is. And so, seems like that's trying to replicate what was going on in Fort Bragg with their crew, you know, their crew program, which means community response and units. And so that is with the police department there, and they're going out and trying to connect with people and provide services at that level. And so, we're trying to do it at the county level, which is much more complicated, all the issues that we have in the county and a very big territory too, so I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, and I don't want to take more of your time, so I know you have a big attended tonight.
Any public comment on this? Yes? Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, my name's Robin Leeler. You mentioned the caravan being here in Willets, I thought, I saw it, thank you, we've been needing that for over a year. I want to put in a big request for similar services, both animal control and spay and neuter services for Cobo Loa in Round Valley. I go up there a lot on weekends, and I find that because there are packs of dogs running unleashed, and they do attack people, they have killed a friend's goats, they are getting way out of control, and those services are very needed, so I hope you look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
And if I could just say, that certainly is on our radar, and there's also issues up in Latenville, so, you know, the dog problem has been a problem for a long time in the county, but we're trying to do what we can with what we have.
Any other comment?
This is Badgus Strong. Thank you. Regarding our unhoused population, there is going to be a point in, one point in time, I believe it's the end of this month, to try to identify how many unhoused people there are in our Willets community. Last year, I was kind of stunned to find out there were something like 150, so there are a lot of people who are unhoused, and in the winter especially, this is really, really hard for them. You know how it is, how cold it is, it's either really cold or it's really raining. I wanted to just say that WELL, an organization, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that I've been involved in for 20 years, is providing a conduit for funding to put some of these people in motel rooms one or two nights a month. It's not very much, but it's way better than nothing. I just met today with Kim Tippett at the Community Services Organization, and we're going to be working with them to try to make sure that we can keep that program going through the winter months at the very least, if not beyond that. And so both WELL and the Food Bank Services District are going to be providing some of those funds, and thank you for supporting that in our community.
Thank you very much, Mad. Anybody else, any comments?
Ackment of ordinances. The first item is the second reading and adoption by title only, a revision to section, oh, I'm reading minutes, sorry. Second reading and adoption by title only, a revision to section 8.26090, suspension, termination, or revocation of license provisions of the Willets Municipal Code. Presenting staff member is Philip Davison, Code of Compliance Officer.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Thank you, Dolores. Yeah, this is the, adding a section to our tobacco ordinance, making it where the city can impose fines to businesses selling flavored tobacco. And it just, it coincides with what the state is putting into, or what the state has put into law. Even though the states get to enforce this too, the city's still required to do two annual inspections on the tobacco license, whoever sells tobacco, so, and this'll just put something so we can, if we have to fine them, we have something we can do. And just asking to waive a second reading, modify the...
Any public comment? Anyone?
Do you actually, I have a quick question, clarification.
Can you go to the microphone, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Small clarification question. Oh, sorry, I'm Garrett Moore. Does that include e-liquid, the vapor, the vape liquids?
Yes, I figured as much.
Any other comment? Yes.
Helen Sims, question. How public is the information regarding people who are ultimately fined or investigated or targeted for revocation of license or any sort of public humiliation?
I don't announce it if I fine them, but you can come in and get a public request record, it's public knowledge, it's just not something I put out.
So it's not in the paper and...
No.
Or anything like that?
No, because ours, it's not a criminal offense with us. The state has a different program they run, and then they'll be enforcing the State Act and plus their flavored tobacco laws, and that'll be through the public health, and they have a little bit different fines and stuff than we do, but I don't...
What about how a parent would identify what a locale is to keep their children out of it?
We don't have anything set up yet to announce that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I need a motion.
I would like to make the motion.
Second motion?
So that, just for clarification...
Wait, wait, the second reading.
Yes, so the motion would be to approve the adoption by title only of a revision to section 8.26.090, Willets Municipal Code, and waive formal reading of that ordinance.
That would be my motion.
And that would be my second.
Councilmember Allman?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alany?
Aye.
Mayor Stransky?
Yes.
Consent calendar, there's nothing on the consent, nothing on the monthly activity reports, nothing for commissions, agencies, and authorities. The city manager reports and recommendations, adopt a resolution approving a rate...
So the motion would be to approve the adoption by title only of a revision to section 8.26.090, Willits Municipal Code, and waive formal reading of that ordinance.
That would be my motion.
And that would be my second.
Councilmember Alman?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Almane?
Aye.
Mayor Stransky?
Yes.
Okay, the --
The second item, are you ready?
Second item.
The second reading and adoption by title only to insert chapter 8.24 for nitrous oxide sales in the City of Willits Municipal Code, making it unlawful for any person in the city, with exceptions, to sell or attempt to sell, offer, distribute, or provide nitrous oxide to any person. Again, presenting staff member is Philip Davidson, Code and Compliance Officer.
So this ordinance will make it illegal to sell the nitrous oxide canisters that the kids are using for whippets or everybody's using for what they call whippets. Bakeries can still get them for use on the cakes and things like that. And dentist's office can still use it, but to the public, it should be illegal to sell.
Any public comment? Okay, I close the public hearing and I need a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading and adopt chapter 8.24, nitrous oxide sales to the City of Willits Municipal Code.
I would like to second his motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second.
Councilmember Alman?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Almane?
Aye.
Mayor Stransky?
Yes.
Consent calendar, there's nothing on the consent, nothing on the monthly activity report, nothing for commissions, agencies, and authorities. The city manager reports and recommendations, adopt a resolution approving a raise in the monthly allotment given to council members.
Okay. I'm the one that brought this up about the wage. And we are now at $200 a month. And I would like to raise it to 450 a month. And I think that it's time that we get with the other communities and the, someplace in here I have the wage of all of the other, all of the other communities. Does anybody have that? Excuse me.
It's on the, it's on the agenda summary. Can I tell you what it is?
Yes.
The United Council receives $850 per month. Fort Bragg receives $510 per month. And Lakeport Council receives $300 a month.
Thank you very much. Is there any communication up here? Any comments? Jerry?
I would like to go on record that I would oppose raising it at this point. I would like to say that our audits aren't complete. I, for one, have foregone my stipend these last couple of years because I promised the voters that until we got our finances in order, that I wasn't going to take it. I don't know what other council members did, but I did not take it. I think that I might entertain the mayor's motion for maybe not as high, once our audits are done and our finances are in order. But I believe, just like I wouldn't go out and buy a new car right now if I didn't know what I had in the bank. So while there are some expenses that we need to make right now, at the moment, our audits aren't done and I think it would be a travesty to our voters who voted in Measure K to do this now. I, I'm not a rich man. I'm retired and I work as a substitute teacher. And if I've, I guess if I've got to watch my penny, so to speak, I, I think as a city we should and set a good example. And while, again, I won't oppose this in the future, once our audits are done and we get a clean bill of health, I do not think now is the right time.
Do I have any other comment?
I'd like to weigh in and say, yeah, the audits are very, very important and I know that we're, I've been speaking to the city manager, I believe we're close to getting the audits.
Yes.
And obviously, tonight's a very important night where we're going to appoint a fifth city council person that I certainly would like to get their opinion on. And I, on this motion, I, I'm not absolutely against it, I'm not, I'm not 100% for it, I'm not 100% against it. But I, I think at the very minimum, it should be a four, a four to six week hold off until the audits come back and we have the fifth council person.
I'd like to reiterate my fellow councilperson's concerns. I myself, as, as all of you know, I was just recently elected two months ago, it would not feel good or right or proper to give myself a raise after two months. It's no doubt, compared to the other cities, that the city council work needs to be compensated and beyond my own personal interest or unease about it, there is a separate need to represent the council, not just for now, but for the future. And so there definitely needs to be some sort of adjustment be made, whether that's today or not, or whether we want to entertain a different amount is, it would be difficult for me to vote yes on a, on a pay raise, but I really just don't see that I myself have warranted that. And it's only been a couple of months. So I would like to wait a little while and, and see, you know, again, how the audits work out and make sure that we're in our good financial shape before I recommend a pay raise for anyone.
Okay. I am, I'm the one that made the act for it, talked to the city manager about it. And so I brought this to the city for a vote on it. And so I would like a motion, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, you want a motion on whether tonight we support this pay raise?
That's correct.
I'll make the motion that the Willits City Council sal, per diem salary is increased as to the, the amount in the proposal.
Do I have a second? Can't dives as, as, no second. Thank you. Let's go on with the -- The next item, please.
Just for clarification, I made the motion so we can move on. I did not support the motion.
Do you want to comment on this?
Yes.
The next item is to adopt a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 1245, and the City of Willits and, and effective January 1, 2025, through June 31, 2025. Additionally, adopt a resolution approving commensurate benefits and salary increases for unrepresented employees, excluding contract employees regarding salary increases, and adopt a revised master classification and compensation schedule reflecting the salary increase.
Public comment? Or up here first, please?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
I just want to point out one thing. This is a relatively good package for both the organization and our employees that would be represented by this. I just, I do want to note, it's such a good offer, agreement, it fills in an extra day. It's only June 30th, it's not the 31st. So I want to point that out. But like I said, we have the shops do it in the audience. Ms. Caldwell, I want to thank you for your participation. It was enjoyment working across the table from you, but here we are, we got it across the finish line. It's a six-month proposal. It gives us time to compose a compensation study and that is what the union is looking to accomplish. So the 2425 fiscal year budget was programmed to accommodate this increase.
Any other comment from up here? Any public comment?
Thank you, Madge Strong, again. I don't actually have a comment on this item, but in general, I appreciate hearing when council members have particular concerns about an item before they make a motion and a second, but I would really like it if you'd have public comment before you make a motion and a second. There's only four of you and by the time two of you have, have weighed in how you're going to vote, it seems like you haven't given the public a chance to actually say what they think. So I, I think as a matter of routine, that should always be, the public hearing should be open before the motion and second.
Thank you very much. Do I have anything up here? Yes.
I'm Robin Leeler and just because I'm new to this, I, I just have a clarifying question or two. I understand that Ms. Caldwell represents the union and who represents the city in these negotiations? That's my first question.
It was myself.
Okay.
And our negotiator, Patrick Clark.
Is that a contracted negotiator?
Yes. And he has represented the city for about eight to 10 years now. That's his professional. He represents districts, municipalities, counties throughout the state.
Okay. And my second question is, who are unrepresented employees?
I didn't hear it.
The question?
The question is, who are --
Who are the unrepresented employees?
Salary increases for unrepresented employees.
This is just for the I E W?
No.
Right. But the second part says, approving commensurate benefits and salary increases for unrepresented employees, excluding contract employees. So who are the unrepresented employees?
There are, if I may?
Yeah, thank you.
There are a handful of employees who are not associated with a represented group. They're not a bargain, assigned to a bargaining group. They're lumped together and the practice is to, instead of negotiating with them separately, they receive the same package as the I B W. So we have essentially three named units. The Willits Police Officer Association, the P O A, the I B W, which is predominantly our bulk of our staff, then the management, which is department head and program managers, and then as a small group of individuals, there are about six to eight individuals that would fall into this category.
Okay. Thank you. Nice and clear.
Any other comment? Yes.
My name is Sheri Ebion. I have a couple of questions regarding, regarding this item. One is, do you have a ballpark number of what the, this will cost to, for this salary Do you have information regarding how much of an increase you're proposing, percentage wise possibly, which might, do you have an old salary schedule and a proposed new salary schedule? Just some detailed information for the public. I understood it was already in the budget, but it would be nice to see that information.
Okay. So basically, if I may?
Yes.
It is a 4% increase across the board. And the, I'm just moving my screens around here to pull up that information that you asked for. It was programmed into this budget. Let me get the right document. Let's see. Approximately $58,760 of an increase that would be distributed among all the employees that would be subject to the 4%, either in the I B W or the unrepresented, as was noted earlier.
And that would, that $58,000 would cover from January 1 through June 30?
Yes.
And so is there an intention to extend that beyond June 30?
So our current budget ends at the end of the fiscal year and as I noted earlier, we are going to do a comp study. If this gets approved tonight by the city council, the next phase is we're going to meet once again with the union representatives and Patrick Clark. We already have retained a specialist who does comp studies. We're going to agree on the units and agencies and put it together. And then from there, that's going to be a model for the next terms, starting, hopefully we'll have this in place by the end of the fiscal year, the start of the next fiscal year.
Great. Thank you.
And just existing documents, if you want to see the previous agreement, we can provide copies, they'll be available at City Hall here.
Any other public comment? Yes.
Did some quick number crunching, that works out to roughly, because it's a percentage increase, roughly 7,000 per employee, which I think, being a journeyman worker myself and over the years having to understand how to not undervalue my experience in labor, that seems pretty reasonable to me personally. I'm, I'm not tied in with the budget yet to understand, you know, what really that means, but I don't think this is some outrageous budget or payment increase for skilled labor. That's my two cents. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Okay, public comment will be closed. Anybody up here? Jerry?
I just want to go on record as supporting this motion and just want to say that we value our employees, we want to be fair. The whole idea of a comp study is to see how close we are within our neighbors and obviously coming to agreement. And just because your neighbor's getting ex doesn't necessarily mean whether it's a city council member or whether it's somebody else swinging a hammer for the city. We may not be able to afford to keep up with the Joneses, but we always want to try and be as competitive as we can, given our nature and our economy up here.
Is that a motion?
So that's a motion.
Okay.
I gladly second that with my appreciation to the employees. Thank you for your patience. This has taken a while and thank you very much for your patience on this.
Councilmember Alman?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Almane?
Aye.
Mayor Stransky?
Yes. Thank you.
Selection of an individual to fulfill the remaining portion of Greta Connie's city council term. The city council will consider each application in the order of its submission date. We have eight applicants. Franklin Rockwell, Robin Leeler, Ragda Zachariah, Cherie Ebion, Bruce Burton, Daniel Sanson, Ethica Moore, and Garrett Moore. The presenting staff member is Jim Lance, City Attorney.
Thank you. So the city council, or the city clerk received a letter of resignation from council member Connie on December 11. And a few days later, at a special meeting on December 17, the council met to decide how that would be filled. And the government code recognizes two different procedures. One is by way of a special election and the second is by appointment of the sitting council members. If it were to be done by a special election, that election would not occur until the November 4, 2025 election. And so we would be without a fifth member until November. And we inquired the county elections department, what they would charge the city for that service and it would be an excess of $35,000. And so the council decided not to do that, but instead to utilize a second authorized method of the government code, that is by appointment. And so the city staff with the manager prepared an invitation for candidates to fill the vacancy as long as they lived in the city or are registered voters. We have eight applicants here and since we're doing this by way of an appointment process, it needs to be completed within 60 days following that December 11 notice of vacancy. So that puts us to a drop dead date of February 11, I believe. So if for some reason we don't complete this by this, by this evening, we have to continue. We do have a little bit of time until early February to get it done, but hopefully it can be done this evening. So we have eight candidates and Brian Bender has worked with staff to develop a process about how, a suggested process about how the council interviews the candidates and how that takes place. And Brian, maybe you want to explain that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lance. Once again, everyone from the organization and the city council appreciates the interest we, we receive. Eight individuals. That is great. But it created a little bit of a logjam in trying to arrange this and have a reasonable hour, or a reasonable meeting. We don't want to be here midnight and still trying to formulate a decision. As we heard from the city attorney, we are under some time constraints and we want to be respectful of everyone's time and interest in this process. So as I said, we have eight candidates. We want to basically from start to finish, once a candidate comes in, introduces themselves, starts a question and answer session with the council, and then it will be opened up to the public. We're trying to limit that to about 20 minutes. So we're trying to be respectful and manage the time effectively. The goal is after I say these opening remarks, remarks of the mayor and the council members have anything they want to add to it, we're going to ask each of the members to basically wait in the community center. There's a table and a couple of chairs there, and we'll call you in. Basically, we're just going to rotate everyone through. The council has a series of questions they're going to ask. Ideally, we like to keep that question-answer session to about 10 minutes. I forgot to mention when the candidate comes in, you're going to be allocated about two minutes to do an opening statement, an introduction, explain your interest into the opportunity that is being discussed tonight. And then after that, after about the 10 minutes, and the council can go back with additional questions to kind of refine your answers, then we're going to open up to the general public. Traditionally, we hold public comments to an individual speaker to three minutes. Once again, in respect of the time constraints, we want to limit that to two minutes. If there's a need, the council and the mayor can waive that, but it has to be consistent throughout the process. At the end, the council is going to make a very important decision, and it will be open to the public, and everyone will see the process unfold before then. Mayor, any questions?
No.
Okay.
And we're going to have all of the candidates out in the other room?
Yes, yes. Just a fairness, but the public can stay and witness the proceedings.
How are we choosing the order of where we're interviewing?
Basically, it's as listed on the agenda as the date and the time we received the application by the city clerk.
Much better than alphabetical.
Okay, all the candidates, please.
Yes, I'm screwed.
Follow the orders.
Mr. Rockwell, you can stay since you're the first.
So there's five questions. There are four councilmembers.
Actually, there's six questions.
Okay, so... And these questions were suggested by you?
Yes, yes.
I'm going to make a recommendation that the four of us look at these six questions, and basically we each choose one.
Yes.
And then we ask them in the same order. You know, you ask your question in the same order. That's just a recommendation from me.
Skip two.
Well, yeah, we'll skip two of the questions.
I mean, it was just basically...
No, I understand.
Yeah, I think that'd be easier.
Now, I have my own question.
Well, then by all means, you can do that, and if that's...
No, would you like... Would you consider doing one, or is everybody get two, or should we get just one question each? Well, at least we do one at least, and then if we feel a need, it'll actually...
Follow up, yeah.
Yeah, then we can do that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, how's that?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Anybody up here have an objection to it? Okay, are you ready?
Well, let's talk about which questions we're going to have.
Okay.
So...
I'll take four.
It's the best question there is. I'll take question one. Does this thing come here? Question one.
Okay. I'll take two.
And I'm going to ask my own.
So which order do you want to have the questions asked?
Just one, two, three, or in?
Just want to go this way? For the benefit of the public, would you like to identify what those questions are going to be, perhaps?
Right.
So we're going to practice right now, so?
Sure. I'm going to ask, what do you believe are the most important issues facing Willets, and how would you address them? In two minutes.
Give and take.
And minus two is how do you plan to engage with the involvement of the community in decision-making process?
And I'm going to ask, how do you plan to ensure fiscal responsibility and make the most effective use of city resources?
And I plan on asking, the council has one employee, our city manager. Can you share any experiences you have supervising or managing employees?
Kate?
Yes. Wait a minute, just a second.
Are we going to ask this way? Is this where we're going?
I would just rotate it.
Okay.
So Tom will go first, and then Jerry will go first, the second person, and you go first and the third person?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anybody have any questions on what we are going to ask them from the community? We're going to have an opportunity to ask questions.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Will there be any interaction with public comment after all of the candidates?
We're going to just ask for comment from the community or ask a question, whatever you want to do. We want to limit that to two minutes.
But at the end of the whole?
After they give their presentation, that is correct.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, council? So the goal is when candidate X is done with council exchange, then it will be that person will be... The public can ask questions, but it's not... The public questions cannot be directed to the candidate. They should be directed to the council, and the council can ask that question. We just don't want to have a sidebar conversation. And then at the end, at the end of the process, as they go through deliberations, then the council has the ability to open up to the general public. Is that...
I'm confused on that question, manager, because that would almost be like changing horses in the middle of the stream. I mean, if there's... If the public has a question that they want us to consider now, I think now's a good time for them to let us know, and maybe we recanformulate the question, but...
Yeah, I agree with you. I think there was a misunderstanding.
Okay.
So let me rephrase my answer. Candidate X got done with these questions that you just agreed to. Member of the public wants to come up and say, "Council, can you please ask candidate X a little bit more clarification on that financial?" What we're trying to do is prevent the candidate to be at the podium and then direct a question to the member of the audience at this stage in the process.
I get it, but if a citizen asks candidate X a question, then I believe, and I'll go to our attorney on this one, we're going to ask that same question to every other candidate.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and so if there's... Right now, if the public has a concern or a question, I think now's a good time for them to let us know what it is, because I've interviewed over 500 people in my life, and I like to say very consistent are questions.
No, I agree with you.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
So the answer is?
What's the question?
Yeah.
What's the question?
I would say if you're a member of the public and you want to suggest a question, now's a good time to suggest a question.
I see your point, yeah.
I'd like the candidates to be asked if they have any conflict of interest that would prevent them dealing with most of the city business.
Madge, if that was incorporated in another question?
Oh, is it already?
Would it be? Would that be okay with you if we... That's a fair question.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
You know what? I'll ask it with my question, because we talked about fiscal responsibility. I can just say, do you have any conflict of interest?
Anybody else? Anybody else from the community have a comment or question that they would like asked?
Is there any right to ask one later?
I'm sure, yeah.
We made you follow-up interviews, too.
This is why we made it open up to the public. I mean, this is the first time I think that we've ever done this at City Willets. And we wanted to do it so that it was open to the public, so they could see what was going on. Because I don't know if anybody else has been through this. Tom has been through a lot of them. I haven't been through that many of them, and I don't know about the other two council people. But what we want to do is make it as open for you people to see what is going on, because we could have appointed somebody, but that would have not helped the public out at all why we did this. And so we wanted to make it as open as possible for everybody to see and everybody to have a question that wanted a question. Any questions? Okay. Doors? Excuse me, Brian. Do we tell each candidate how much time and everything that they have?
We just did. You're going to rerepeat it.
It might be good to let them know they've got two minutes to make an opening statement.
Franklin Rockwell, it's not clear at this time, so I brought Rockwell in.
Okay.
Hello, Robin Leeler. I was prepared for a three-minute introduction. I hope I don't go over, but I will try my best to be quick. Yes, Robin Leeler. Good evening. It feels good to be here, applying for a seat on the Willet City Council. As most of you know, I committed myself to this journey a year ago when Madge Strong decided not to run for reelection. I began by getting to know city staff and city members, city council members, that I expected to be working with. Who could have predicted the many changes we've seen since then? I began walking door to door, and by the fourth night, I could not wait for it to cool off enough to start my evening adventure. Two hours each evening, talking personally to hundreds of neighbors and friends over the next eight weeks. I was learning so much every day, and mostly I learned just how much I love this town. I met people I'd never met before. I found that people in Willets are very welcoming. Over half the homes have "Welcome Here" signs, and when I knocked on doors, people were invariably very, very welcoming. Out of 600 doors I knocked on, I probably got two people total that were less than welcoming, I'll say. The people here are welcoming. They are generous with their expertise, energy, their interests, their ideas, their thoughts, and their good humor. This is what I bring here tonight. I do not have easy answers. I come with questions. I'm finding from walking and talking to people that questions open up deeper conversations that lead to real, sustainable progress. I learned that we don't all have to agree to ask, to be able to put our ideas together for our community, and in fact, diversity is empowering. And I hope to bring this energy forward as we move into the next few years of talking, listening, and growing together. Thank you.
Okay, Robin. Thank you. Thanks for being here. It's a very short question. What do you believe are the most important issues facing Willets, and how would you address them? In two minutes.
Two minutes. Financial matters are real high on the priority list. I am concerned that we have not had financial reports for the last four months. I want to see that restored. I don't have a catalog of the important issues, because I believe that's going to come from the whole community. So I really want to keep talking to more people and see what's important on their agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Robin, it's my turn. How do you plan to ensure fiscal responsibility and make the most effective use of the city's resources? In the second part, do you have any conflict of interests to anything you do with the city, because you're... We're going to be dealing with money, so...
I don't believe I have any conflicts of interest. However, I've noticed the example that you have set for recusing yourself when you have a conflict. I expect to adhere to that also. I have handled budgets before for nonprofits. I've worked for a lot of small businesses. And one of the things I really want to look at is a propensity to use outside consultants for a lot of our projects that we should be able to do ourselves. I think that does cost a lot of money. I also believe that, from what I have heard, the Willet City budget may be not as secure as we think it is, and that it may be time to set a pause button and evaluate what our normal monthly expenses are before we add on extra projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. How do you plan to engage with the involvement of the community in the decision-making process?
Well, I just joined the Board of Directors for WEL, and I believe they've been instrumental in the past in having public forums to help small entrepreneurs to talk about economic development, to talk about helping the homeless, and a lot of other... And I bring a lot of ideas for forums I would like to see in the future. I loved the Candidates Forum that happened before the November election, and I believe that we are small enough as a town to have town hall-style meetings for people. I remember being in the big room here when Holly Madrigal was still on the city council, and people could line up and ask their questions directly to everyone seated there, and we got some good discussions going. I'd like to see that kind of interaction happen again.
Thank you.
And this is a good example. Thank you. We're off to a good start.
Welcome, Ms. Leller. The council has one employee, our city manager. Can you share any experience you have supervising or managing others?
I'm a classroom teacher. I have 30 years' experience teaching. I did retire 13 years ago, and I continue to substitute teach at all grade levels. And yeah, organizing 30 kids who... And my main... My full-time job was doing the Court Community School classroom for Mendocino County Office of Education. I had a standalone classroom behind Mendo Mill for many years with kids who were struggling and often, what do you call it? I can't remember the word right now. Oppositional, that's the word we use. And I was very successful in bringing them together as a cohesive group and getting real... We had a real learning community going.
Thank you. Okay.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, the community... You want to ask the community to talk?
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I think if we do this, the questions that we ask, that are asked from the community of her, are going to be the exact same questions we're going to have to ask every person coming in.
Okay. Thank you, Robin.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I think that's a valid concern, and that the questions be fair and the same, and the public will have an opportunity to comment later on at the selection process.
Sure, yeah. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Gonzalez, you're going to ask first, correct?
Yeah.
Give us your name, please.
Yes, sir. Ragda Zaccaria.
Ragda Zakaria.
Okay, we have an opening statement.
I have a very brief one.
Okay. Back in about two minutes, please.
Okay. I got encouraged to be part of the process after I've been living here for two years and a half and attended almost all the city council meeting. And with the new council meeting come to place, and I chatted with almost all of you during the election. I just feel right now, and then after reviewing the adopted 21 city goals, I just felt like I can be of value, added value to the newcomers to the board. For instance, property rights, the roads, infrastructure, duplication of effort, and I just feel like it's good sometimes to inject a new ideas out of the box and talk about it. Because the city of Willits is a beautiful town, and I used to come here 20 years ago with the kids, used to take the skunk train, it was vibrant, and I did a lot of volunteer work with them. I did that on purpose to get to know the community, and I just feel like it's kind of split in half. You still can inject a new ideas, a new ideas that will invigorate the town, will bring more tax dollars to town, and still preserve the charm of the town. Because the community is like, no, we don't want to do that. We like what we have. But at the same time, growth is important for any town. Any questions?
Yes. Four, to be very specific, yes.
This time, I get to go first in number one.
Oh, okay.
My question is, how do you plan to ensure fiscal responsibility and make the most effective use of the city's resources? And then another part to my question is, do you have any conflict of interest that might prevent you from being on the council?
With the resources, of course, I have, I read briefly the budget. I've read the goals. I've been sitting on the city council for over two years and a half. Probably, I missed two of them. Using the resources is by eliminating duplication. There is a lot of issues has been met, done, focused on, conducted, and it's duplication. It really didn't do any positive energy, bring any positive energy to the wealth of this small town. I don't see I have any, I'm a real estate agent, half-retired, so I don't know if that's, I know you're a real estate agent, too. I don't think that this is a conflict of interest, and if so, I would like to know what from you.
This is your chance to tell us. Have you thought you had any conflict of interest?
No, I don't think so. I don't feel so, no.
All right.
I just like have a lot of ideas. I like to work with the current board and kind of re-energize the town financially, bring more traffic in. It just needs some infusion, the building code, encouraging entrepreneurship in this town. Cut the bureaucracy of these entrepreneurs that are trying to bring new ideas to town or build a new building and so on. And I think there should be a task force. One of us need to talk to all the vacant building and try to make things work without layers of governmental issues.
Okay. Kay, my question is, how do you plan to engage with the involvement of the community in the decision-making process?
I'm a firm believer of face-to-face communication, and I think one of the city councils or all of us, we need to have face-to-face meetings with the community, like John Hassett does at the Coffee House once a month. And you just have conversation. Conversation will eliminate a lot of doubts and will create more clear communication.
Okay. Thank you.
Talk to people.
Thank you.
The city council has one employee or a city manager. Can you share any experience you have supervising or managing others?
Yeah. When I used to be in the hotel business in sales, I supervised a whole department of sales. I was director of sales, so I supervise like 12 people, I do.
Thank you. So, first of all, it's impressive you've been here, you've been attending for two and a half years, City Council minus two. So, everything you've heard, everything you've seen, what do you believe are the most important issues facing Willits, and how would you address them?
The most important thing for Willits, in my opinion, is re-energize the economy. You need to bring more dollar money into this town. You need to bring more traffic into the town. You need to encourage people to build homes, fix their homes. These all, the hotel owners, there is a way to talk to these people and make their buildings, going through the building departments, and make the process much easier than we go right now. There is a lot of layers from my experience, and there is a lot of duplication of effort. And when I reviewed, that's it. And let me see. And the most important thing I've noticed, like if there is a focus on improving something, it's only localized toward one section. Like, I don't know why we are just doing all the work on Commercial Street and not on North and South Main Street. I mean, the entrance south and north of Willits, nobody knows that where even exists. So, I believe in re-energize the city and the entrepreneur. We need to encourage the entrepreneur, the 20-years and to the 40-years-old, to listen to their ideas, make a group, economic group, okay, what can you do to the, into the town? It's just otherwise, organs keep going down the scales.
Thank you. You can answer our question.
City manager, any questions?
I don't have that opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Public?
No. No, not yet.
Oh, sorry. Pauline E. Kelly? Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay. I wish you had the coffee. Hey, it's all right. They're coming.
My name is Sheri Abiam.
Thank you. I'm the first one to give you, you need to give us your overall, any information that you might have on yourself.
Your introduction, two minutes.
Two minutes. Information on myself. So, I originally came to Willits in 1977, and came and left a number of years later, and I've gone full circle and returned to Willits almost 10 years ago. My professional career, I started as a math teacher. And because I was the numbers person, they gave me, oh, I started as a math teacher, and I was on the teachers' negotiating team. And because I was the numbers person, they gave me all the financial documents. And I found them really interesting, in a totally different way than teaching. And after 18 years of teaching, I left it and went into school finance and became the chief financial officer of a number of different school districts. And there, I oversaw some wonderful projects, solar projects, built a new elementary school, and I was responsible for monitoring and overseeing all the budgets and making sure the money, in my mind, anyway, that the money was spent in the best way, best in the sense of serving the kids, the teachers, and the school sites, all of those components. So, and my, and I continue to delve into finance in various boards that I'm involved with. I'm on the Measure B Board, the Mental Health Treatment Act Board. I helped write their financial plan for the first five years. I'm in the process of creating a long-term, 20-year financial plan. The tax rate has changed, and so, the plan needs to change. I'm also on the Civil Service Commission. I helped write a water ordinance for the Little Lake Valley a few years ago. Went to the Board of Supervisors, it was approved, was sent to county council, where it has languished, for lack of a better word.
I think you're two minutes.
Yes. Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
Kay.
Thank you.
We have some questions for you.
Okay.
How do you plan to engage with the involvement of the community in a decision-making process?
I would attend gatherings that the community is in, that draws a number of members of the community. I would certainly, I would probably create a Facebook page that allows people to access me through Facebook, to have a dialogue. I know a lot of people in the community, and I am not shy about going up to people and just starting a conversation. So, that is something I really feel comfortable doing as well. If need be, if I really felt like I didn't, that I wasn't connecting with enough of our community, I might put up something in front of Safeway. I've done that a number of times for referendums, for voter registration, something like that. That, to me, is really feasible, and I feel comfortable in a setting like that as well.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
The city council has one employee or a city manager. Can you share any of the experiences you have supervising or managing others?
Yes, as my, in my position as the chief financial officer, I had a staff. I had a payroll person. I had a person who paid our bills. I was basically, it was a district with about 1,800 kids, and so, I was arm-in-arm with the superintendent. And the, we oversaw a lot of the decision-making and put an agenda together, things like that.
Thank you.
Sheri, what do you believe are the most important issues facing Willits, and how would you address them?
Most important issues are, how do we support and attract business? That's one. These are not necessarily in a particular order, but it's also not coincidental that I said that first. So, yes, support and attract business. I think it's important to attempt to reduce our carbon footprint. It's important to protect our environment, provide for our citizens, for their needs. But also, really important is not to lose our small-town pedigree. I know that's what keeps me here. Yukaya is only 20 miles down the road, and it feels like day and night when I go from Willits to Yukaya. Because Willits has that, that feel about it, that while it's small, we're able to get a lot of our needs met here, not all of them, certainly. But, so, it's that wonderful balance between getting enough of our needs met and maintaining our small-town pedigree.
Thank you.
All right, now, it's up to me here. How do you plan to ensure fiscal responsibility and make the most effective use of the city's resources? And another part to this is, do you have any conflicts of interest that will impede you being on the city council?
I have absolutely no conflicts of interest. As far as fiscal responsibility, that's, I really have a great interest in that, looking at budgets, looking at unaudited actuals, looking at actuals, looking at interim reports. Where are we at these benchmark places during the year? When a proposal comes, costing out a proposal, how does that impact? The big, the big picture is really critical when looking at budgets.
Thank you, Sheri.
Yeah, thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your time.
Hello?
Where's the seat?
Welcome.
Where did it go?
Oh, okay. Hi. Good evening.
Good evening. You're going to have a two-minute opportunity to introduce yourself.
All right. Thank you. Bruce Burton, 350 Sherwood Road. I've been a Willits resident for some time, and I've spent some time up there in those chairs. I'm still interested in what goes on in the community. I've obviously had a break for eight years since I've been on the council. And, you know, I, things in my personal life have changed somewhat with passing of Linda, and the last couple of years have been kind of tough. But I feel like I've got still some, a lot of reasons to be concerned and want to be involved in other decisions of the town. I've got a son that lives here. I've got a business here. I've got grandchildren that are being raised here, and just, and family. And I think that I could help, help make some decisions that will get more of our kids to come back to town. I'd like to, I'd like to think that I could help make those decisions.
Thank you.
As you know, the council has one employee, the city manager. Can you share any of the experiences you have supervising or managing others?
I mean, I can, I own my own business, so, you know, it's mostly in that aspect of life, it's managing your own time and your own, making your own priorities and looking for decisions that are best for yourself and for your employees and your company. And I think that it's a, it's kind of a dual role in the city. I tried to address it a little bit in my comments that I wrote, that I believe that the city council has a dual role of being kind of the enforcer of the town, but also the, of the order in the town, but also to be the advocate and the cheerleader, so to speak, of all the city staff. I certainly clearly recognize that the city council only has one employee, and that's the city manager. I've worked with a half a dozen city managers here at the city of Willits. So, I think I've always been able to respect that, that chain of command, and that if I have a problem with the city, it is to speak with the city manager and not go to department heads or go out and, and pretend that you're, you have, you have that authority to deal with, with the different employees of the city.
Thank you. Bruce, what do you believe are the most important issues facing Willits, and how would you address them?
You know, I think the most, I mean, I think we are occasionally reminded of the importance of the core services that a city provides. I mean, it's easy sewer service, having a reliable police department, taking care of roads, I really think that that's our, that is what you are elected or sitting up there to do, is to supply those. Take the money that the public gives you. You're not there to be a fundraiser. You're there to spend that money most wisely and get the most bang for your buck to the community. So I think that that's my primary look at what I see my role in the city. What was the other aspect of that question, Tom?
What were the most important issues facing Willets and how would you address them?
So I think those are the key issues, the deals. I mean, I think the other is, you know, we worked really hard in this city to get an alternate through town, that being the freeway by best. And I think that since that we have done that, I think it has helped the community spirit, it's coalesced the city somewhat. But I think we could do more work on our downtown. I think we could do more work on Main Street, more work to make our merchants feel welcome in the city and to address their needs, you know. I think specifically, I think that, I think that we have way too many red curbs in Willets. I think the focus on, I think it was a nice experiment to put in bicycle paths on Main Street, but I think it's a failure and I'll take part responsibility for that. We have bicycle things on Main Street, but I don't think that it is serving our merchants very well in town. And I think we should take another look at that. So that's just one example.
Thank you.
All right, Bruce. How do you plan to ensure fiscal responsibility and make the most effective use of the city's resources? And then another part of my question is, do you have any conflicts of interest that will impede your work on the council?
Well, again, Sherry, I think that, I'll repeat myself, that I view the budget of the city as a, is a sign of public trust, that the public has agreed to give us this amount of money to run the services for the city. And it's our job to not overspend that, but spend what we get and spend it in the most judicious manner. I've always been an advocate of having a balanced budget. I don't like spending reserves. So I think I'm pretty fiscally conservative that way and it does take some tougher choices sometimes. Pardon me.
And the other part was, do you have any conflicts of interest that would impede?
Yeah, probably. I own some property in Willets and the 500-foot rule certainly applies. And I think I understand those limitations and I have no problem stepping aside on those things. But I, you know, I think, in a way, that's a good thing. I mean, I am invested in this community. I have sat on that council with, up there with approximately 25 different council members. And I would say that a dozen of them don't live in Willets anymore. And that doesn't mean that their contribution wasn't valuable, but they are not here to live the full ramifications of their decision-making. And I have lived here, as you, most of you up there have, for your whole lives and you understand that, what the difference is. And that's not to belittle anybody, but I fully expect and have always been making those decisions because I'm here and I'm invested in the community and not going anywhere.
Thank you. How do you plan to engage with the involvement of the community in a decision-making process?
You know, I've always had my telephone listed in the phone book. I guess that's not quite as a big deal anymore. Not sure anybody has landlines besides a couple of us. But I've always been available. I mean, my business number is obviously, but, you know, I, I've always made myself easy to get ahold of if you want to get ahold of me. So, I mean, I think that, you know, I probably, I think democracy is a participant sport and I think that if you have a concern, you have an obligation to step up and make that concern known. It's not my job nor your job to go out and solicit everybody's opinion. Again, I would say that I believe that as a council member, you are there to make the best decisions that fit within your goal, you know, your core values. And if those values are shared by the electorate, then you'll be invited back. When they're not shared, they'll probably tell you to not come back. But I think sitting there as an elected person and trying to take the temperature of what the public thinks and that you will change your vote or your, you know, your perspective, I mean, I think you're open to, you're open to have your mind changed, but if it doesn't change your mind and you're just reading public opinion, good government is not always popular. It isn't always making the popular decision. And I think you have to be prepared when you think it's right for the city to make a decision that may not resonate with everybody in the room.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're done?
That's it.
Thank you.
So can I go home now or is there?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Give us your name and a couple of minutes of your experience.
My name is Daniel Sansom and I don't really have any type of a speech or anything prepared. I'm a custodian at the school district. I live in town. I have a family here and I raise my family in town and I have a vested interest in the way things go. So I'd like to be involved.
Thank you.
Back to me. Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thanks.
Daniel, what do you believe are the most important issues facing Willets and how would you address them?
Well, the homeless issue is pretty important. The, I think temporary Band-Aids solve anything in the long term. And so I think that discovering the root of any problem is the way to fix it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. How do you plan to ensure fiscal responsibility and make the most effective use of city resources? And then another part of the question is, do you have any conflict of interest that might impede your ability to be on the council?
I can't see any conflict of interest. Start with the second. What was, could you repeat the first part, please?
How do you plan to ensure fiscal responsibility and make the most effective use of the city's resources?
Well, I, I don't have a plan on how to do that currently. I really have no idea what the pressing issues are. I don't, I really don't know what the city spends its money on, so I really don't have an answer, being completely ignorant on the topic.
Okay, thank you. How did you, how do you plan to engage with the involvement of the community in a decision-making process?
Talk to the community. I'm in it in my daily life and I have my own opinions that I feel. And I think that just talking to the people in the community would be the best way to gauge on how they feel. Like I said, my own opinions, I feel like I'm pretty in line with most of the rest of the people I talk to about things.
Thank you.
The council has one employee or a city manager. Can you share any experiences you may have supervising or managing others?
Well, I, years ago, I was a manager at a restaurant. I know it's not the same, but it does have a lot of parallels. And that's officially, unofficially, in groups of people and we're trying to get things done. I tend to try and organize the group in such a way that it would work best.
Okay. That's it?
All right.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Hi there, welcome.
Hi.
So first, state your name, please, and tell us in a couple of minutes about yourself.
Yeah, so my name's Ethic Amor and I currently live in Willets. I was born at the hospital that was on the hill. I currently am a therapist and I work for tribal health at the moment. And the reason why I'm here is I love Willets. I love this community and I think the most power we have is working locally. So I've, I'm currently on the board at the Menesino Ballet in Yukaya and I have also, which is probably in the packet, I've also served on the Leggett Unified School District where I lived up there. So I'm familiar with Brown Act and how boards, you know, function. But the reason why I just put my hat in the ring was to make sure, it's super important as a resident of this town that the city council, like, solve problems. There's a lot of things that are just not being felt by the community and I don't think it's, I think it's just because staff are tired, it's a small town, and so I think it's super important that residents, you know, put their hat in the ring and say that they will solve problems. I have a master's in social work, which all that means is that I studied government and how the interaction between people and things and how to get resources to people. Right now, I'm a therapist, so I'm really connected to the vulnerable populations that you guys talk about. And I'm pro-community, so like, there needs to be this minutia of, you know, police and public and private. And my big emphasis is trying to ignite maybe the private sector to get more economic development into this community. So in a way, that's my kind of nutshell.
Thank you. All right, I get the honor of asking you the first question. How do you plan to ensure fiscal responsibility and make the most effective use of city resources? And the second part is, do you have any conflicts of interest that may impede your work on the City Council?
I'll answer the first. There might be a time where if somebody comes up and I've maybe seen them in a context because of HIPAA laws, that I cannot vote on the matter and so that I would just say that. As far as financial, that is, that is super important, that the transparency. I currently, in my role as the Menesino Director, I mean, on the board for the, we currently have a, there's a new director and one of the, one of the important things that we're really going through, fine-tooth comb, is the financial, like, health of the organization. So I think if you don't have that, you have nothing. So that's my big emphasis wherever I serve.
Okay. How do you plan to engage with the involvement of the community in a decision-making process?
Oh, I love to talk, so, and I'm, you know, my skills of communicating, but I really think actually, well, if I was to return this role, I was actually going to make it a habit of going to every resident of the City of Willets in like a six-month period and just saying that I exist and hello and if there's any concerns, because so many, so like, there's things that brought up to this meeting tonight and there was huge sectors that were not present to even comment. And I, and it's, I don't think they just realize. And the more people participation makes better government.
Thank you.
All right, so as you may or may not know, the council has one employee or a city manager. Can you share with us any experiences you have supervising or managing others?
Well, I was a CEO of a small company. I think, I'll just say it blanket, everything needs to be fair and transparent and all labor laws need to be followed, but they also need to be followed. So I notice in government, when I worked contentious issues on the Leggett Unified School District, it's very easy to get like, oh, they're my favorites, we're only going to follow one law. And therefore then, everything gets slid under the carpet and then malfeasance happens. So I'm about transparency and then making sure everybody has, like, due process, but there is a process and it goes forward, especially with government money and tax money. So I guess you would say I'm very intense about that process because otherwise, even lawsuits, the city can endure a lot of lawsuits for no reason except that laws weren't followed. And then also, when governance issues are brought up by citizens and the city council just goes lame and doesn't address, it causes like this lack of faith and the intensity diminishes in the city. And so then when the city council wants everybody to like get excited about an event, everybody, it's the feeling that nobody cares because the city council didn't address things. So I'm all about, that's what actually a social worker does, making all these systems work together and being able to have the hard conversations. And I've done it in every capacity I've ever been in. And so I guess you would say I'm very bold. And like tonight, I was like, oh, I'll absolutely put my name in, like, if I don't get tonight because you guys probably have, you know, of who you intend. So I notice in government, when I worked contentious issues on the Leggett Unified School District, it's very easy to get like, oh, they're my favorites, we're only going to follow one law, and therefore then, if everything gets slid under the carpet, and then malfeasance happens. So I'm about transparency, and then making sure everybody has, like, due process, but there is a process, and it goes forward, especially with government money and tax money. So I guess you would say I'm, I'm very intense about that process, because otherwise, even lawsuits, the city can endure a lot of lawsuits for no reason, except that laws weren't followed. And then also, when governance issues are brought up by citizens, and the city, city council just goes lame and doesn't address, it causes like this lack of faith, and the intensity diminishes in the city. And so then when the city council wants everybody to, like, get excited about an event, everybody feel, it's the feeling that nobody cares because the city council didn't address things. So I'm all about, that's what actually a social worker does, making all these systems work together, and being able to have the hard conversations. And I've done it in every capacity I've ever been in, and, and so I guess you would say I'm very bold. And like, like tonight, I was like, oh, I'll absolutely put my name in, and like, if I don't get tonight, because you, you guys probably have an, you know, of who you intend, you know, because that's how usually government works, but I'll be back. You know what I mean? And so, so, so that's my seat right there, in whatever, because I'm that good, and also the city needs as many people involved in government as possible. The city is always going to die. You know what I mean? I live right, I can say Starbucks, right? So, so, so I saw the energy and the incredible that, that transformed, I mean, that needs to come all the way down into Willets. So I'm very passionate.
Okay, I have the last question.
Yep.
Ethica, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
What, what do you believe are the most important issues facing Willets, and how would you address them?
Economic development. And, and, and it starts in little and small ways, from publicizing, you know, maybe, you know, what you guys are doing, you know, to the community, to really harnessing the power and the energy of the private sector, which, which is, and letting them know, like, hey, let's develop this lot, and putting it out there. I think the, Willets is so heartfelt and so laid back, they miss the opportunity to, like, where, where Fort Bragg has built that huge Waterworld Center, right? Well, it's like, eh, our pool's fine. And so I, I think that there needs to be energy and vitality, and I'm willing to do the work to get that going. And that's door-to-door, getting the different sectors involved, because the, actually, this community is pretty splintered. You have, because of the, 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 the back-to-land movement and all these things, so there needs to be a lot of unifying. So it's in connection again, and there's a lot of hurt feelings. So it's super important that there's a bigger and bold vision from the city, so, so that people feel confident in, like, like, really moving things and proposing things that will bring huge economic development. Like, there's no reason why a group of people couldn't have developed that Starbucks for, for their own Willets Starbucks version. There's no reason. There's incredible talent here, right? But we just don't think of it. We just don't even envision it. And so what you have is, like, developers over here, and ranchers over here, back-to-landers over here, and so there, there needs to be much more unified and push and excitement, and so that's what I bring. I'm super excited about everything, because, and that actually comes and all in in this. I worked hospice, okay? And the best thing you learn in hospice is that, that every day that you have breath, you can change the world, because you are alive and excited, and so I bring a huge excitement. And so I hope that that affects this tonight, and then in future, one of those seats is going to be mine. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Good evening. Could you give us your name and about a couple of minutes' worth of what you have done, or how you feel about it?
Sure. My name's Garrett Moore. I've been a Willets proxy resident for 11 years, meaning I lived in Dos Rios for about seven or eight of those years, making Willets sort of my hometown. Like I said, I've been a builder for most of that time. I usually work as a owner op, owner, owner builder, that sort of thing, and do the small tasks. I've put entirely too much time into the community theater. It's sort of, it's a vortex that drags me in, because I'm good at it and willing to, like, throw down the energy for it. So I keep getting caught in that vortex, but I vowed against it this year. I'm going to take a year off of the theater. So, yeah, I believe I've had this intense desire for a long time. I'm very, very proud of Willets. It's just kind of, like, that, that blend of creativity and drive that the people here have, the, you know, the insane amount of patents, all that kind of stuff, is just very impressive to me, and I dream that if I ever had to leave the place, that there would, that I would know that there was a younger generation, sort of like, fired up to be like, to be point, like, they've got the energy, I want them, I want, I want the youth and the kids to be participating, and, you know, take their energy and point it in productive directions and projects that will bring community together, and in my mind, more importantly, bring, add an attraction element to the city, because I, I see that we have a tourist industry that has sort of started to flounder in the time that the, that the main corridor has been rebranded as Highway 20, and it sort of makes Willets just a place to go through. So that's sort of my vision.
Thank you. I have a question for you. It's how do you plan to engage with the involvement of the community in a decision-making process?
Well, I'll admit that I'm not intimately familiar with how being a council member is, but I imagine that communicating with members of our society, I'm pals, or whatever you want to call it, with several business leaders in different areas in the community, and really just, my goal would be to encourage more people to show up here, like, to the point where we have to move into the, move into the auditorium, and, you know what I mean? Like, I believe that, that, that level of engagement, people are thirsty for, and so I would like to reach out more to, you know, do it on Facebook if we have to, and that sort of thing, to attract our community so we can hear from them. And if not here, then get them to be emailing us and, and sharing their thoughts so we can consider those things and try to work together.
Thank you very much.
All right, the city council has one employee or a city manager. Can you share any experience you have supervising or managing others?
Well, as, I've worked with my father in the trades for most of the time that I've been a builder, if you will, a journeyman is what the technical term is for it, and that often involves reviewing the procedure of what we're going to do in the days to come before you even go to work, and then on your way to work, or as soon as you get there, briefing whoever you're working with to help direct them, and let them know what check-in points are, and those sort of things are sort of just the management procedure. And then I've also recently enrolled in college again after too long of a hiatus. I always told myself I would never stop learning, so I'm just trying to start getting the papers for it. And I'm studying electrical, as well as I plan to study different aspects of business in order to better understand, like, you know, the finances and sort of the bureaucracy of how things go together in a business, because I want to be an entrepreneur myself, but also would like to be participating in that in a community sense, because I've seen some of the local businesses contribute amazingly to different initiatives from local groups and things like that, thousands of dollars, and, and that, those kind of behaviors, I want to encourage and help the businesses thrive so that they can feed back into the community more efficiently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so Garrett, what, what do you believe are the most important issues facing Willets, and how would you address them?
The most important issues facing Willets? In my own mind, I would say that I think the most important issue is our economy. I've seen, like I said, with the creativity and the drive of local entrepreneurs and just creative people in general, the artists, the musicians, there's an incredible amount of raw talent. And so my, my issue is that there's no public events where we're able to come together as a community. Not no, I mean, there's, you know, there's things out at the, out at the ballparks, and there's, we've started shutting down the, the first Saturdays during the summer, isn't, I think it was monthly. That's the, exactly the kind of event that I envisioned, being able to show, you know, that we are a vibrant and productive community that more people need to engage with, and then we'll be able to profit as its denizenry off of that exposure.
Thank you.
I hate seeing businesses close up.
We all do.
So it's...
I get the pleasure of asking the next question. How do you, excuse me, how do you plan to ensure fiscal responsibility and make the most effective use of city resources? And another part of this is, do you have any conflicts of interest that may impede your ability to serve on the council?
So the first part was, sorry.
How do you plan to ensure fiscal responsibility and make the most effective use of city resources?
Well, I would say that the ensuring fiscal responsibility, I think that there's probably several people in the, in the organization, like the clerk and the manager, and especially our attorneys, and anybody, those type of people really have input that needs to be considered strongly. So I would say my, my goal, not being a financier myself, would be to strongly consider the experts that are involved when we're discussing these things. And then also, I would like to utilize AI to compare against things that have and have not worked for similar city governments, and, and use those two inputs, as well as the council member's own wisdom, to, you know, find that path to what is the reasonable solution.
All right. And the second part was, do you have any conflicts of interest?
Oh, correct, sorry.
...impede your ability to serve?
I would say no. I, you know, I, I work for my money when I work for it, and my, my primary interest is to see the city of Willets become unified, as it, as it tends to gravitate towards, I want to see that. And I don't, my primary trade is the building, but my secondary trade is entertainment organization. I've, I've been running karaoke at Digger's Bar in town for the last three years. We recently wrapped that up for, I think that they're maybe approaching selling the business, so they're cutting an expense, and I plan to keep doing that at three other venues in town on a, on a seasonal schedule, so that just kind of demonstrates how my main, my main interest so far has been in providing, like, that therapeutic community space to do a fun task together, and just kind of build that camaraderie, and it has worked. I have, you know, people were shocked that we were ending, and they were like, take my email, you know, like, I can't, this can't stop, I have, I have to have this. So it's proof positive that those things can work and get people excited.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're done?
All right.
So I think we're going to invite everybody back in, right? Is that right, Chair?
Do we have one more?
No, we got a...
He didn't show up.
Oh, he didn't show up.
Yeah.
So what are we going to do now?
Now we're entering phase two, evening where?
Evening where?
I was going to say, good thing it's not you and I, right? I know, it's true.
I want to thank all of the candidates that appeared here today, tonight, and they were all very good. I would say that we need to have any questions from the community about any one of the candidates.
Go on once. Go on twice.
I know you're good at those, but...
I actually have a small phone. May I speak? Do I need to...
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is, this, my name is Deanne, and this isn't directed at any of the candidates, but I just wanted to note that there was a little nuance in some of the questioning, the way, sometimes it was asked as, what are the most important things facing Willets, and how could you help them? How can you address them? And how can you fix them? So I just wanted to bring your attention to the, the need for consistency with language, because sometimes that can lead to a slightly different variation of answer. So that was all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do you want to discuss anything?
Yes, there's no comment. I mean, it's up to us, and we will talk about it.
That's, that's the only one from the community? Thank you.
I'll go first, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. You know, the last two weeks has been, this is the thing I think about when I wake up in the morning and when I go to bed, and of how, what's, what's a fair process for this? And I think we accomplished, I believe we accomplished a fair process. And then, what do we do? Do we have, do we make sure it's a female, because we have four men up here? Do we make sure that if it's a male, it's not a white male, even though there's, I mean, all these things? Do we, do we go for a liberal? Do we go for a conservative? All, all these things go into play, and, and I think I've, I've thought of every possible position, and then it just, I just have to go for the, if you take away the conservative, liberal, male, female, whatever way, how, how do we work with, in my opinion, economic development? Because economic development is, is where we are of, in Willets, and we've certainly talked about the bypass tonight, we've talked about the closed businesses, many candidates talked about the number of closed businesses up here, and you have to look at this of, where are we going to go to get, to get more businesses here, to get more tourists here, to get more employees here, to fill whatever empty apartments we have or houses, we don't have that many, but to get them full and possibly build some more. That's where I'm at. And, and I know that I'm going to focus tonight, my vote tonight, on economic development of, of, in Willets, and I, it's down to, for me, it's down to three candidates. I certainly want to hear what the other council people say, but economic development is the most important thing to me with, with fiscal responsibility and accountability, those two have to go together, fiscal responsibility and fiscal accountability, that's, that's the, the second most important thing to me for that. So I started...
I, I guess, number one, some of you folks bring some varied experience, some of you have more experience. And for me, the important things are fiscal responsibility. We have some new people here. We have some new experience on the council here, and I guess I have, in my mind, I have at least two, maybe three in, in my head, and I'm thinking experience, fiscal responsibility. I'll be honest with you, one of the things I campaigned on was that I believe in, my primary role as a city council member is roads, water sewer, and police. I'd like to tell you that I'd like to solve world peace or whatever else is out there, and I'd like to come up with some other things, but there are some things that are enshrined with the county has to deal with. The city here, I'm, we're responsible for those four things, and that's been my focal point, with the exception of things that are thrust upon us by the state that we have to deal with. And sometimes, whether it be planning, or police, or whatever, that sometimes we, we have to deal with some state issues, some of the things we voted on today are things that we have to kind of align ourselves with some state rules. But for the most part... And, and I think I've, I've thought of every possible position, and then it just, I just have to go for the, if you take away the conservative, liberal, male, female, whatever way, how, how do we work with, in my opinion, economic development? Because economic development is, is where we are of, in Willets. And we've certainly talked about the bypass tonight, we've talked about the closed businesses, many candidates talked about the number of closed businesses up here. And you have to look at this of, where are we going to go to get, to get more businesses here, to get more tourists here, to get more employees here, to fill whatever empty apartments we have or houses, we don't have that many, but to get them full and possibly build some more? That's where I'm at. And, and I know that I'm going to focus tonight, my vote tonight, on economic development of, of, in Willets. And I, it's down to, for me, it's down to three candidates. I certainly want to hear what the other council people say, but economic development is the most important thing to me with, with fiscal responsibility and accountability, those two have to go together, fiscal responsibility and fiscal accountability. That's, that's the, the second most important thing to me for that. So I started...
I, I guess, number one, some of you folks bring some varied experience, some of you have more experience. And for me, the important things are fiscal responsibility. We have some new people here. We have some new experience on the council here. And I guess I have, in my mind, I have at least two, maybe three in, in my head. And I'm thinking experience, fiscal responsibility. I'll be honest with you, one of the things I campaigned on was that I believe in, my primary role as a city council member is roads, water sewer, and police. I, I'd like to tell you that I'd like to solve world peace or whatever else is out there, and I'd like to come up with some other things, but there are some things that are enshrined with the county has to deal with. The city here, I'm, we're responsible for those four things. And that's been my focal point, with the exception of things that are thrust upon us by the state that we have to deal with. And sometimes, whether it be planning, or police, or whatever, that sometimes we, we have to deal with some state issues. Some of the things we voted on today are things that we have to kind of align ourselves with some state roles. But for the most part, I'm looking for experience, somebody, some person that can hit the road running right off the bat. And that's what I'm looking for.
I looked at the finance, because that's probably the most important thing to me, is the finance. And I think that there were people in the interview that were definitely very much ahead of some of the others. And I know that when you first come on the council, whoever gets this will have a learning curve that is unbelievable. You have to realize that, that, that it is just something that is out of the ordinary, if you haven't experienced it, to really realize how much responsibility that we have. We have mayor, the mayor makes an appointment of city committees in San Marino, UCA, San Marino, and Willets, and they're time consuming also. You have a lot of work on the agendas, which come out every two weeks, except in December and Jan, November and December, because of the Thanksgiving and Christmas. And so I guess I just want to leave, with the finance is one of my important things to do, to have on my, on the committee. Thank you very much.
Well, I would like to begin by reiterating what my esteemed colleagues had already said, financial responsibility, having that learning curve is super important. I would say that when I campaigned, I was, people didn't know who I was particularly, and at some point, you know, you always get asked the question, why are you running? Why are you running? I think that a lot of people run for their own individual reasons. I literally wanted to bring new voices and new faces to the town. I think somebody had mentioned earlier that, you know, I'm excited about the future, right? I work with young people all the time. I want this town to succeed 10 years, 20 years, 50 years, 90 years. I'm very proud of the fact that some of the families who have been here generations have been supportive and inclusion, inclusionary to include many new people, such as my, myself and my family. And I want that to continue. I want that to keep going. It's always difficult when you get new people. And being a new person is not easy, but I feel like it's necessary. I feel it's, it's necessary that we open up who participates in city government to a wider range of people with different experiences, with different backgrounds, knowing that it's going to be very difficult for anybody new to do that. Now, as we all know, it's already a two-year term, so I do want to remind everybody that if you were not selected at this point, you know, that we have, two years is another election, and, and there's so many good qualified people that we heard from today. It'd be a real shame to, to, to lose any of your inputs. We do have monthly meetings, you have all of our contacts, and, and I really look forward to engaging with, with each of you over the next several months and years. And I just wanted to share that was, that's essentially my focus. I mean, certainly there's a financial aspect of it, certainly there's an aspect of it, but again, I don't have a lot of mandate, literally winning my election by five votes. We just had an election, and one of the things that we heard from many different people commenting, commenting now, and people that I spoke to while I was campaigning, was, you know, that the people need to be listened to in a more direct and serious way. And, and that means to me that we get new people, that we get not necessarily better people, because we're not losing anybody. As people had already mentioned, if, if you've been in this community for a long time, you're not going away suddenly because you didn't get what you want today. So I just wanted to reiterate my, my support for what I've been trying to say while I was campaigning and in my own campaigning effort to, that other people deserve a chance to show what they can do, or what they can learn, and maybe that they want to be successful or not be successful. But we did have an election, the people of Willets already did spoke up just two months ago, and, and I think that their casting of vote should matter still. That's how I look at it.
Anybody else up here with anything else?
Well, I'm ready to make a motion, but...
Well, we have to have public comment. Any public comment? Yes, Robin? Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm hearing that dilemma. I'm glad I'm not in your place at this point, to try to choose somebody, because that's a really tough thing to do. I think I heard two people say they had two or three candidates that they were favoring, and that might be a way to start, is to say, you know, what do you think are the top three candidates? And see how much overlap there is for starters, rather than trying to deal with the whole field. I mean, rather than making it a negative process of elimination, you know, make it, who are the people you felt really the best about, without discouraging anyone from staying on with the process? That's just a thought.
Thank you, Robin. Anybody else want to have a comment? Yes?
So what research I did before our meeting tonight, it seemed like, as you're saying, that the roads have been a, a major focus for a long time, and I see those things improving. I, I do, I do wonder how, I think we have the responsibility for all the streets in Willets as the city. Is that the idea?
Yeah.
And, and so to me, that's, that's absolutely something to stay on the warpath about, because it does improve quality of life, and, you know, this, because roads can make or break somebody when they, when they destroy their cars, suspension and stuff, it's, it's serious. But I also see that as something that's going to continue to be a focus for many years to come. There's a lot of roads, and as we repair them, we approach, you know, new upgrades that need to happen in the, in the sewage and the electrical. So I would encourage both the council and the community to remember that that's not really an obligation that we can let go away. It's not going to be something that gets accomplished and then it's done, because it's like the Golden Gate Bridge getting painted constantly over the years. It's like we have to keep up on those things and remain vigilant on the importance of that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We just have a, a motion?
Yeah, I would suggest that, that you hear nominations now, if someone wants to make a motion, and, and you could have the public comment on that particular candidate and receive a second and vote on it.
Okay.
Well, I'll start. And I'm saying this, and, and I appreciate, Robin, you saying this is a hard decision, because it is. I mean, I, I know at least three of the people, you know, and I'd be okay with, with anybody up here, really and truly. And my motion is going to be based on what I believe is the most important of fiscal and the economic development, business experience, the historical knowledge of Willets and, and council experience. And I, I believe that we're lucky to have Bruce Burton apply, and that's who I support. I know that, Robin, you know, you, you lost by five votes. And I'm sorry, I mean, you lost by five votes, but that's, that's a fact. And so certainly you're, you're in the top three, but I'm basing it on what we need right now, and, and I believe that Willets city financial situation is not in the best of health, and that we need someone who has, who can hit the ground running and, and help us with the experience of where, where we've been, and hopefully where we're going. So that's, that's my name.
Yeah, that would be my name also. I think that the experience that Bruce brings is important. I have sought his counsel over the years. When I was police chief, I have talked to him, he's out in the community, and at the same time, I wanted to also echo that some of you folks that came out today, I would encourage you to be more involved and get out there and, and get that experience. I know it's hard, you can't get that experience unless someone gives you a chance, but there are many ways to serve out there in the community. I was on the school board, I was on the fire board, I volunteered in a lot of different ways. I've been on nonprofits still, I'm on some, and so, but that's what I'm looking for. So that's...
I think Bruce Burton is a wonderful choice, a really good. And I, I wish there was some way that I could stay true to what I campaigned on and what I promised people, and still support someone with enough experience to hit the ground running. I, I don't see myself voting against Mr. Burton. But I would like to point out individually that, you know, Robert is definitely top tier, and we're lucky to have you. And I was very impressed by Ms. Moore, and appreciate that. And as a math teacher, I was very impressed also by Ms. Ekjung, who also, just with so many other individuals, just brought passion and understanding of fiscal needs, and that's really what we're talking about. So those are my top three.
Okay. I'm sorry, Bruce, I've known you since you were in eighth grade. But my preferred person is Sherri. I think that she would do a really good job, and I would say that Bruce and Sherri pretty much are the same as I, but I would like to see a lady up here, and I would like to see somebody that has the financial knowledge that she has. Thank you. So we, it's a three to one.
Do you want a motion?
You want a motion, please?
I will make a motion that Bruce Burton be named the replacement council member.
For a two-year?
For the two, the remainder of Red County's term.
And I'll second that.
And I would suggest that you have public comment then on this motion before you vote.
Okay.
What? Public comment? Oh, public comment. I gave it one time. In.
I'm sorry if I interrupted you.
No, go ahead.
Helen Sims. I made a short list as people spoke. Bruce was at the top of my list, and Ifa Kmore was, was second. And I, I, I think that inviting Bruce into this seat because of his, his historical knowledge is just absolutely invaluable. And while I appreciate Larry's opinion that we need a woman on here, I would hate to have a woman on the council because she's a woman. I think it needs to be the most experienced person, so I, I think that Bruce is, is that person.
Could I say something?
Yes.
I think it's important that you guys feel that maybe you even like go into closed session or continue the process, but what, it's more as important that you feel that there's transparency, that you guys like kind of just say, because what it feels like from just the outside, because I haven't actually done any political organizing, but I will now, is that you guys called and all decided who was going to be the candidates. And I know that, I know that that's not the thing, but I'm third generation Willets, right? And I know kind of how community rolls and runs. So I would just like that you guys to make sure that you say statements about transparency, so that the community doesn't feel that that wasn't the case. Because we all know what your top choice is, and as far as financial stuff, and I'm, I actually don't even, I'm not really invested yet. Financial stuff, it just takes will and guts to go tear apart a financials and hold people accountable. So what I'm feeling just as a newbie, and that's probably why, you know, is that have guts, you guys. Care about the city. And that's what no one feels in Willets, and the downtown is deteriorating. And so y'all talk about financial queues, is whoever's gonna, have you guys met every, every resident Willets? So that's what I implore, have guts. And if there's, if it's corruption, tear it apart, get new stuff. Because we live now. God bless. Thank you.
I want to respond to that, because transparency is as, as clear as glass on this, of clear glass, because from the very beginning that we talked about this through direction of our council, it was very clear, we would not do any executive closed session on who we were going to vote for. That's why our thoughts have been, this is the first time I've heard Jerry's thoughts on this, this is the first time I've heard Matthew's thoughts on this, because we've been very close-mouthed on this. And I, I respect the Brown Act, and let me absolutely tell you that if somebody wants to think that we called each other before this council meeting, that person absolutely doesn't know what they're talking about and how false that accusation is, because it absolutely did not happen.
Thank you for saying.
You're welcome.
I just, yeah, go ahead.
Daniel Sansom, I would just like to say, Matthew, that running on a campaign of bringing in new people and, and then not doing it for, I understand the situation that you're in. However, if that was the role that you were taking, I'd, I'd like to see that. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor?
We moved down here from Leightonville 33 years ago, and I think I came to a, not sure of the date, but I came to a city council meeting immediately to see what was going on, and Bruce was the mayor, I think, at the time. And I was, I didn't know, I didn't know who he was, and I was highly impressed with him, and I always have been. And I really thought, when I thought about, if I were up here talking about my vision for town and goals, I thought I'd be saying the same things he was, particularly the city. The city, I always felt like the city runs really well. We, we have a, we have a good, we got our water, we got our sewer, they take care of the park, and, and the police, we don't have a lot of crime, and I think all that is the major part of the city that Bruce is part of. However, I really supported Robin. I think she has some wonderful ideas. I think she's a, a really good input to this town, and I wish her well, but I'm, I'm pleased you made the decision you made.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes. Excuse me.
I would just like to offer, down the road, if you need help with financials, I'm offering to help.
Sherri, I know your experience. Are you serious with that offer?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what you need, I mean...
Measure K.
What?
Measure K.
Measure K.
We'll take you up on that.
Yeah, good. Good.
And I would love to see you in two years, because you were my second choice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, Dan?
Hello, my, you guys did great. My name's Dan Loudon. Now, I'm serving my 12th term on the Menisceno Civil Grand Jury, and I just want to invite all the candidates and the general public.
To apply.
The applications start in about two months, and if you want to learn some government, city and county government, we do it. I have a wealth of knowledge, trust me.
That was a cheesy commercial.
You gave me the opportunity.
And I have to say that, having been police chief, Dan visited me many times to ask about how things were... about how things were running, what was happening.
Yeah, you should have been the sheriff.
Yeah, I have interviewed Dan a few times. But the Grand Jury is a great place to get the experience of learning how government operates. So if you really want to get involved with the government, and, you know, for the next couple of years, think about the Grand Jury. It's a one-year term, and you guys, that was a great process. Very, you did great.
Thank you.
You know, can I say something to the...
Yeah, man.
I purposely, even though I was tempted to reach, I wanted to reach out to the candidates and just ask some, but I thought, no, I wanted to keep the process pure. And I didn't want to call these guys, because that would have been a violation of the Brown Act, say, hey, what's the deal? I thought, only person I contacted was the city manager to say, how's this going to work? And just in case this thing kind of went off the rails one way or the other, or if somebody asked this and they had a procedure for us to follow. So I wanted to put that out there that...
Thank you. Good transparency. Thank you.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Almond.
So I just want to make sure, I mean, Gary made the motion for Bruce Burton to do, to fill out Redicons.
The resolution of the City Council of the City of Willets approving the appointment of Bruce Burton to the City Council vacancy with the term expiring December 31st, 2026.
Okay, he made it, and I second it, and I vote aye.
Okay. Councilmember Gonzalez? Alnese?
Abstain.
Mayor Stransky?
I didn't hear the question. Thank you.
What's the basis for abstaining?
I just can't make a decision, I guess. I don't want to violate any of your, something, can I not abstain?
You're required to vote unless there's some conflict that you cannot vote.
Okay, so I'm hearing you're saying that I don't have the option of abstaining.
Correct.
Okay, in that case, I vote aye.
Councilmember, or Mayor Stransky?
I voted also, and the pick was a good pick, and I've known Bruce for a lot of years.
Can you vote right now?
Did you vote?
Yes.
Yes, I did. I voted for Sherri.
No, no.
No, we're doing a motion now.
We're having a vote right now on Bruce. There's a first and second on Bruce.
Okay.
And we have two yeses and one no.
And I have, I know also, because I think that Sherri would be the best. Thank you.
Okay, to be continued.
Yep.
Now we have another nomination, yes?
So that motion failed. We don't have a majority, and so someone else can make a nomination?
In that case, I'd like to nominate Robin Lether.
That nomination failed.
Any other nominations?
I'll put everybody out of their thing. I would vote, I would nominate Bruce Burton.
Is there a second? I'll second that.
Councilmember Almond?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alnese?
No.
Mayor Stransky?
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you.
So this...
Does Bruce take office right now?
Yes, he needs to be sworn in at this point.
Thank you all candidates. I'm glad you applied. Thank you.
Yes. You're going to take the season's dice.
But you don't get a badge this time, Bruce.
I think we still have that.
Yes.
Yep.
You're going to take the season's dice.
But you don't get a badge this time, Bruce.
I think we still have that.
Yes. You're going to take the season's dice.
But you don't get a badge this time, Bruce.
I think we still have that.
Yes.
You're going to take the season's dice.
But you don't get a badge this time, Bruce.
I think we still have that.
Yes.
You raise your right hand. I Bruce Burton?
I Bruce Burton?
You solemnly swear or affirm?
I solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies born and domestic?
Against all enemies born and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States?
Bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
Take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon I am about to enter?
Well and faithfully discharge the duties upon I am about to enter. Are we going to adjourn?
No. You just signed up with four hours of work.
Okay. So adjourn?
Oh, yeah. Mayor appointments.
We did the MNA. We did a mole last night.
No, we didn't. We passed on them. They were on the agenda by mistake. We need to do the mayor appointments now.
You want Bruce to look at your list just to see?
Yeah.
Going to borrow my cheaters?
Department.
List of appointments. It's at number 10.
Community Development.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me, we're still in session. Your appointments now. You have to announce your appointments to the committees.
Okay, I have them. Thank you. The Finance Committee is Tom Almond.
That is not the list that I just signed up for.
You're here.
Am I?
You will be.
That's not the current list?
He's got it up there in the highlighted area.
Okay.
I do have it up here. I had it in the envelope. No. It's in all my papers. Which one did you want? Again?
Finance?
Finance.
Measure K.
Okay. Finance Committee is Tom Almond and Matthew. Water and wastewater is Jerry Gonzalez and Larry Stransky. League of California Cities in Redwood Empire Division was Jerry Gonzalez. Mendocino Council of Government was Tom Almond. Economic Development and Finance is Larry Stransky. Mendocino Solid Waste is Jerry.
No, I can't.
Oh, that's right. So I have it, Larry. Mendocino Transit Authority is Larry again.
No, it's me.
And you?
That's my little heart.
Okay. And local agency and finance formulated, LAFCO, is Jerry Gonzalez, and Mendocino County Museum is Tom Almond. Front Currier's is Jerry and Larry. Tom Almond and on Measure K, and Matthew. Transportation, I guess, will be mine again, and I'm going to drop some of these on Bruce also. So, and Sonoma Clean Power. So that is two places that I need somebody, and...
We also have a bi-monthly session with the Chamber of Commerce.
Commerce.
It may not be on the list.
It is on the list.
It may not be on the list.
I have it highlighted. I, you need one council member for that, correct?
Yes, at least one.
What time is it focused?
It's random. It's basically, we can set that schedule.
Yeah, we could set it, and I would do it. As long as, that way I can...
So Jerry Garcia.
Gonzalez.
Gonzalez.
And Larry Burr.
I'm sorry, it's the second time. Thank you.
Thirty seconds.
So we're going to start through the Department. We're not going to do those.
We did them yesterday.
Did we what?
We did those the other day.
We did them yesterday.
I asked that earlier, and somebody said, no, that we didn't do that.
No.
Yes.
What's he talking about?
Good and welfare.
Good and welfare. Anybody have good and welfare up here? Bruce, congratulations.
Well, thank you. And I was going to just take the opportunity to say it's good to be back.
Thank you.
All right, do that.
Do you know your faces?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You bet. Tom?
No, I'm good. Well, I'm just going to say, yes, I do. The fact that we had eight candidates, seven showed up, and then we had interaction from the community, I'm going to tell you, that's how democracy works. So I hope there are no hurt feelings, but a decision had to be made. So I appreciate the council's very good and open discussion that we had.
Okay. Sherri?
I just want to welcome Bruce aboard, and I always hope to work with you, and now I guess I have the opportunity to just...
I also would like to welcome Bruce aboard, and I'm really looking forward to working with you and learning from him.
Thank you.
Very much so.
And second again, I'll thank you very much, Bruce, for volunteering for this for the next two years, and you and I will, well, you might run again, but I will not. Thank you very much.
It's a good one, Larry. Close session.
Yes, I have, it's closed session, and...
So just for the point of order, 12A is not going to be heard tonight?
Oh, it's not?
No, it's not. After advisement from legal counsel, there's no need to re-greet the council prior to the upcoming event.
Okay.
That's the Gelber litigation.
Yes.
Right. But we have one other item.
Yes. We have one other item.
And you should announce what that is.
And that's evaluation of the city manager.
Correct.
Thank you. Adjourn, please.
10:52, and they've just come out of closed session?
Yep.
And just...
Yes.
No action was taken?
No action was taken.
Okay.